Welcome, everybody, for this work session. And everybody's present except the mayor's excuse. The pledge to be a offer by Councilman Brad Hemphill and vocation by Councilman Mike Andazola.
I believe this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, glory to him and we bother. We thank you for gathering us together this evening, Lord, as we hear the budget coming for the year. We actually please send your spirit amongst each and every one of us this evening. We especially pray for our manager, our city clerk, our department heads that are here to present, and the members of the council. And we ask you to please have both your heavenly arms around our mayor as he's going through his trials and tribulations right now, Lord. We ask you to be with him and his family. We ask this to grant our word. Amen.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any comments? On agenda items?
Nope.
Do you have any, do you get any cards?
No.
On either one? None? Okay. Then we'll move on to item number seven. Twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four preliminary budget. The department reviews.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of brief words. Rob is gonna basically go through the bulk of the presentation, but as you guys are aware, we met, we did our one-on-ones with budget. We introduced those back into the process this year, so we had those. We met with most of the council that was available, so we gave you kind of a higher-end overview of some of the major issues that we were facing and some of the major components that go into the budget. As part of last year's budget, there was a request that we provide the department heads with the ability to present. So the next two work sessions that we're going to do is exactly that, and that's the main purpose of tonight's meeting. Is to provide departments with an opportunity to discuss their budgets with you directly, and I wanted to do work sessions because it allows for a more open dialogue, right, back and forth. So and then eventually we'll go back to the council meeting. So in March, we're looking at two of these, right? And then April, we'll move on to presentations in a council meeting format. So by then you will have had one-on-ones. You will have had an opportunity to hear the departments make their presentations as well. And then, well, by the time we get to the meetings, you'll be relatively familiar with the budget and what the desires are from the department has and from the manager. And then we're looking at having May to do the tentative and the final. Of course, that's early, and it gives us some latitude if we want to move some stuff around. So that's kind of the basic layout. What I'll be doing is I'll be turning this over to Rob. Rob's gonna go over some information and another at a high level again to review what we've covered and review some of what's in the presentations tonight and some of what's not in the presentations tonight. And I also wanted to give a nod to Matthew because as we headed into the budget process, we decided we were going to move some of that to city manager because we wanted to have more of a budget orientation rather than accounting with the presentation. Turns out he took on a lot more than he had bargained for, and he's been the one who has jumped in and taken on all these spreadsheets and internal service funds, and so he's been carrying a lot of the water on this. He's done a lot of work, so most of what you see at any detailed level, he's compiled in the background by going through all these spreadsheets of which there are many. So with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Rob and let him start the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cella. So Vice Mayor and members of the council, as the city manager indicated, we'll have two work sessions this month. We're splitting it into two different kind of program themes, if you will. Tonight is general government, not to be confused with general fund, but really about general government, all those things that we do, kind of facing the public that is not strictly user fee-based like an enterprise might be. So we have sent out in the packet that was delivered last week the detail of each of those budgets. Our intent today is to not scroll through individually. All of that, we'll look at each departmental summary. If you have specific questions, we certainly can get down to that level of detail on a line item basis. Just so you understand on how we go about creating the budget and the process, very collaborative working with each of the departments, sending out to them their existing budget, multiple years of line item expenses, so they could look at any trends if they exist. And then we go through a very detailed line item review and compare to prior years. Well, last year you said you needed X. Now it's X prime. How come? So we go through and look at it in a very detailed fashion. In some cases, they're asking for something net new. If you recall during our budget or financial policies conversation, thinking about the capital improvement budget, the operating budget, and then this concept of supplemental, meaning we don't have it today. We want to add it to the budget. So it's different than a inflationary issue, right? Well, you didn't have that extra thousand because, well, we still are doing the same thing. It's just costing a little bit more versus I need a new body to do something different or more stuff. And so you'll see where it's applicable. Those departments will have a supplemental column to kind of differentiate between year over year, doing the same thing. And if we need something, now we want to do something more, it'll be very clear that it's that it's a different cost that's being added to the budget, or at least being proposed to be added to the budget. So tonight we will be covering the general government items. Each manager will be getting up, each department head, and we can go into the detail as necessary. What I put into the staff report, if this would go to the next line. There we go. Still was asking me to let go of control, and I can't do that. In the staff report, you will have seen at least some general items that each of the department's budgets already include. So if there are questions about personnel, questions about benefits, these same things apply throughout each of the departments. So first and foremost, it includes all costs associated with anything that this council has done up to this point. That would include adding a position within the police department in the current year, and that we are now moving that forward into fiscal twenty-four. That is dealing with any past decisions that may have been made relative to cost sharing of healthcare expenses and the like. So what does it? All of the budgets include that. So we've modeled everything that this body has already made a decision upon. But it also has within the budget, the known expenses for personnel, and that includes a four-point-five percent increase to healthcare. So Danielle had gone to Ragged Conference just over a week ago, and this is the number that's being shared with with all parties. So this is basically look at it as an inflationary change, four-point-five percent across the board. This does not change how the employees and the employer share in that this is merely modeling the existing share of expenses, but it's going up four-point-five percent. We have also have some changes minimal in Arizona State Retirement System going up very slightly. And then in the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, it is going up about ten basis points. Main factor for that is is the difference in some of the rate of return that happened within the fund, the PSPRS investments, as well as our bond council holding back about six-hundred thousand and not going out for proceeds in order for us to make that contribution. So we've modeled that into. So if you're looking at the police department saying, why do their personal services go up? Four-point-five is for healthcare and ten percent is for basically or the ten basis points for the PSPRS. Each of the departments also include a inflationary or market pressures understanding that's happening as of today. So as you saw in our CIP presentation, how that's been fairly dramatic on some of those expenses, we had some specific line items that we are modeling and can tell that are going up quite quite dramatically. And some equipment, we've seen our fuel expenses go up year over year. We know our purchase of commodity gas and commodity electric has also gone through the roof as we've had those conversations. And in turn, because we are a consumer of those utilities, our utility costs are going up. So one side of the transaction is this supplier. Our costs have gone up. We now need to change our, the way in which we are recovering those fees, and we're recovering those fees from us as a customer. So we've seen that go up as well. Those have been modeled throughout throughout the organization. You will also see some changes of movement of cost from one program to another, to where it makes more sense, at least in staff's perspective. That way we can look at our costs and say, what are we really doing for, as an example, recreation? In our current year budget, some of those recreation dollars exist within the council's budget directly. Makes sense. Council wanted to have control over that, and you wanted to direct where those dollars were spent in regards to basketball or in regards to some upcoming recreational opportunities. But when you kind of look sideways at our budget and say, well, how much money are we spending on recreation? There was no way for anybody to really tell. They see an organization called recreation, but it didn't include all those expenses. So where it made sense, we're moving things around, so we're not increasing really the bottom line of those budgets. You'll see in a moment the city council's budget going down and the recreation budget going up because of that move. So we've modeled some of those changes, and you will see that very clearly in the summary of each of each of the departments as we go forward. And finally, where I indicated earlier on supplementals, you'll see where applicable, a separate column for something where we're adding to the budget. Again, not because of inflation, but because a new program, perhaps a a, an increase to a particular position where we want to reclass or we want to add a position in totality. Reverse side of that is what is not included as of this moment. What's not included are any salary adjustments relative to the compensation market analysis that has been done by HR. That will be a conversation coming at the end of this month and seeking council's direction on how should that be modeled then within the budget. So what you're seeing here is year over year, everything is equal. We're not making any adjustments to salary. We've also not contemplated what would a change in our cost ratio or sharing ratio of healthcare between employer employee. Again, that will also be a conversation on the twenty-seventh of this month. And finally, healthcare changes or health savings account increases that the IRS ratchets up a little bit every year. We have not changed the value that a prior, that this body has told staff to model. So those things are as they were when you adopted the budget a year ago. That doesn't mean you can't change them moving into fiscal twenty-four. And as part of the conversation on the twenty-seventh of this month, we'll bring some options in regards to what those cost strategies look like. But this today and our meeting on the twentieth will just be looking at year over year, no, no changes other than inflationary pressures. What also doesn't include here is any final cost for the allocation of internal services. It's kind of the chicken or the egg, right? So well, how much are internal services gonna cost? Well, we don't know until we get all of the costs relative to healthcare and to salary and to and to and to. So we want to make sure that we modeled at least what it is right now, but knowing that those will be adjusted as we bring a final budget to this body. So those internal services for fleet and IT and engineering are not are not included as, but we are modeling that if all else is equal, what would that cost be in that department? So it's not zero. It is it is relatively flat. So what we'll be doing at the end of this is adjustments for all of those of those will be done on March twenty-seventh. So we've modeled at least in our calendaring that that twenty-seventh will be a work session and talking about a lot of, a lot of interesting points relative to HR as relative to other expenses that you might want to have moving forward. So with that, Vice Mayor and members of council, we'll go right in and kind of go in order. The city manager will lead us off to go over through those organizational structures that the city manager was directly responsible in preparing for tonight. And again, as we go through this, what you'll be seeing on the screen is the summary for each department. This is the roll-up that line item detail that then is going into what I would call those kind of character totals of personal services, the operating expenditures, internal services, and then the bottom line. To orient you to this, you'll see then the green or mint shaded area. Those are really the budget comments that describe any of the changes. It shows you the positions that are budgeted in each of those organizations. And then finally, where there's maybe some granular detail that you might want to see specific here in the council, the city manager will walk you through. Thank you.
Any questions before we press on?
You gonna leave this page now?
Leave it?
Yeah, or you're gonna talk?
That's not what I'm gonna speak to.
Hey, you're saying we're not gonna talk about salaries at this time, this meeting?
Vice Mayor, members of council, so we can, we can have some conversations about that, but HR director has the detail relative to the market analysis and the market study that was done in regards to why they are what they are today and what they may need to be. So that conversation was gonna be on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, some of these don't have values on the bottom. And I'm hoping this year we don't have stuff like the Hispanic Heritage Corporation deal.
So what we did was essentially in the case of council, so when you say there's nothing there, those would be Chamber of Commerce, right, basketball league and recreational programming opportunity, and then the downtown association, they're all still in the budget. They're just not in yours. Right? So that's what Rob was speaking to earlier. So when we initially started like some of the recreation conversations, they were really based on donations. Okay, and so as the recreation program now has evolved and we started to add programming, we decided well, it makes sense to put those activities in recreation, and that will continue to grow. So rather than inflate the council's budget by putting him in there, it's more appropriate now that they're not really donation-based. They become part of our budget. And as we've talked about in the past, now you have a recreation division, and those costs will show up in there because they will, well, depending on your decisions, but they'll continue to grow as we develop those programs. So for the items up here where you see a zero, they're in this case, at least, they didn't go away. They're just now in Jamie's budget under recreation.
What I'm getting at is like when they presented to us on Eastern Hispanic Heritage, they came forward, Mr. Munoz and Mr. Rivera. Munoz. They came before us in a meeting. They were asking for five hundred dollars.
Right.
Mayor jumped out and said, I think we should make it twenty-seven hundred.
Correct.
That ended up being a political even, ended up putting pressure on all of us right there on the crowd. I don't think them kind of things should happen again this year. If we got things to say or things to present, they come out forward and nothing like that. I know it put some under pressure to go ahead and go with it. And there it is now.
Again, the reason it's there is because we're not changing the council budget as it was adopted, right? So what we're presenting is whatever changes had occurred. Now, obviously, we weathered the departments, and they've changed theirs. The only changes we've made to council's budget is the movement of appropriations to different locations. I haven't altered anything that's in there. So that's a conversation that you can have. And in the case of Hispanic Heritage, you know, again, that was something we added last year. If it's council's desire to remove, lower, increase, whatever you want to do, that's a conversation you have to have as part of that budget process.
That's not what I'm saying. And to get it sorted after that, I don't want to treat one another that way.
To clarify, Arnold, you're talking to us.
Yes.
You're saying that to, yes, not to anybody else.
Yes.
You're clarifying the rest of us that we don't, we shouldn't do that.
Saying I don't want to give any, any fund money.
Right.
I just thought that wasn't right the way.
Right, but we did that.
So let me ask you a question. So let's say that as part of this list, for example, we have Community Foundation. The Community Foundation is a group that we hand over our most significant amount of donations to, and they go through a process where people apply for grants, and they award a certain number of grants. This year we did two, to community organizations to five oh one C threes. Is there a different process that you would like to see us go through? Would you, would you prefer those types of donations go through the Community Foundation? Would you prefer that we had our own application process, that we sought applications from the community through an application process, and then council then went through that list and made choices as to what would or would not be in there? How would you like to approach those types of appropriation?
Vice Mayor at one time said he would like things brought forward, presented, and have a cutoff time on when, when, you know, they applied for them, and I thought maybe we were doing that already. Well, I would like, I would like, you know, to us be with the rest of the community on the same page with them also, not to.
It was the first of the year that it was done. Anything came in later? No. But we bent the rules and some came in later. What all on the Community Foundation, who all? What other cities received? We put in that seventeen hundred?
Well, it's Arizona Community Foundation. They have different areas within the state. And Stafford has an area, and Brad sits on the panel that hears these applications.
Does anybody else, but who in our, in the valley supports it besides us?
That I don't know off the top of my head, but I know that we're not the only ones. What they do is they take money, they put into a reserve, and generally what they do is they allow that reserve to build to a certain level. And I think they try to make grants off the interest that it generates, right, because they try to make it a revolving fund. So again, we're not the only ones who contribute to it.
I don't want to dwell.
No, no, and it's, but it's good.
Make sure we do well.
And just to be clear to Arnold, I agree with what you're saying. I just wanted to clarify that that comment was for was for us. That's something that we need to do a better job of. And with the ACF real quick, at a recent meeting, we did discuss things like the Junior Basketball League, and should that come under, and and obviously, logistically, that would become silly.
Well, and again, this is kind of a council decision, but my understanding was that we're trying to develop recreational programming. So one of the reasons we moved it out of council's budget is I don't consider it a donation anymore. I consider it part of programming. Right? So that we're trying to add, and we added some additional funding in there. It was four thousand last year. And through that, it's about a thousand dollars to hire a coach to run a program, and we've had several now. And we may want to put more in there and continue to grow those. Those I wouldn't consider donations. I would consider those operational expenses, and now you're developing basically a recreation program at that point.
We gave to Jamie the manager.
Correct.
Hey, as long as she ain't catching any political stuff either, that's fine.
No, I think it's worked quite well. I mean, we've hired specific people to actually run the programs. They organize them. There are sign-ups, right? So in a sense, we've mirrored a lot of the way Thatcher had run their programs, right? Because it allows us to grow those with minimal overhead. And of course, the people who run the programs obviously have an interest in it, so there's some, some energy there to get. And of course, Ed has had his going for many years now, the basketball ones.
I don't think staff deserves the political pressure that might come with some of that stuff. We should be able to decide, and if it turns into a political deal, we ought to handle it.
Yeah, and at some point, we'll have to make a decision if we want to have we want to broaden the scope of who can apply for city donations on the donation level. In a past life, that was a process. We sent out during the year an application, five oh one C threes throughout the organism or throughout the city were notified. There were monies available. They made application. You had a specific application and it filled out. They they filled out things on their budgets. They filled out the program they were going to do. They had to make sure it served the community residents. We would then compile that information. We would provide it to the council. You would then review their applications. You would have all the costs that were associated with it. And then as part of the budget process, having this broader approach, you would then, as a council, decide which one of those things, if any, you wanted to fund, and that would make it a more I guess balanced approach in the sense that we're putting everyone on notice. That was a five oh one C three. These monies were available, and then you would assess based on their application, based on the merit, and then you would make a decision now.
I don't know what the answer is. The way tell Jamie goes through at least a year, two years or something to find out what's what she would like to structure.
Well, and again, I think we've got a rhythm going with hiring contractors that run the programs. The Hispanic Heritage is kind of a different animal, and it's and it's because you're already doing in a way, you're already funding donations through the Arizona Community Foundation. But then that would be a donation that you're making directly from the council. And so do you want to combine that? Do you want an application process? Because at some point, a decision has to get made, right? At some point, if someone comes forward, you need to be able to assess that and as a council, decide we fund it or we don't fund it, and what do you want that process to?
And I have a question to ask you, because can I ask your terminology, which you mean, so I carry this back to the board? What you mean by political? And do you realize that these scholarships are open up to all kids? These are not open up just to Hispanic kids. These are up to everybody. What do you mean by political? You were at the event. You were having a good time. I don't understand what you're what you're getting at with it being.
This is the perfect example. It just happened to be the Hispanic one that popped up here. It could be anything. But to have some people coming and then to present twenty-seven hundred dollars in a meeting like that puts pressure on the rest of us to say yes to you. That's what I mean by political. It might have come from you then, okay? I don't know. I don't know where twenty-seven hundred dollars was gonna appear from one day to the next, and I wouldn't want that to happen on any event coming up. The basketball may need a little bit more or this and that, but to confront us in a public setting and put that kind of pressure on us is not, is not good. It doesn't make for a good atmosphere, and I would like to avoid that in the future. That's what I mean.
Okay, well, I didn't grasp what you were talking about.
That's what I meant. Let's not put each other in a pickle in the future.
And I don't want to put each other in a pickle. I don't want to do that, but I'm just trying to find out what you're where you're coming from.
I've been with you since this thing started, what's it? Eight years maybe or something? I know how it's grown, and it's for everybody. College manages most of the giving, some who donate can say they only want it for Stafford. They only want it for Thatcher. All that's running fine, but when people come forward wanting five hundred dollars and it jumps up there twenty-seven, and you almost feel in a body, you can't say no, that's political. So we, I would like to treat one another, you know, avoid them things.
Well, and I agree with you.
That's it.
I don't. I agree with what you're saying. And I'm just trying to find out, you know, and you answered the question.
Yeah, that's it.
That's all I'm trying to find out for you.
Any, everybody gonna find some political mess in it because it deals with Hispanics. That's could happen all kinds of ways. I'm just saying the way it came forward didn't was not right. I hope that answers the question.
Okay, well, I'll carry this back to the board. I'll let Mr. Rivera know, and I'll let Mr. Munoz know, and.
They know my number if they got any questions.
Yeah, they sure do. So I'll carry that back.
Okay.
All right, so council budget, the main takeaway is that the decrease that you're seeing is not money that have been taken out. They've been moved. So again, if you look at that list, for example, the Chamber of Commerce, which they'll be coming back with a new contract during this budget cycle. That's gonna be put in economic development. That wasn't a donation to begin with. It's a contract. And then the other three were donations that we're making, which again, now we're moving into making it programming as opposed to donations. And then, of course, there are some there like the Lions Club, Fourth of July, and so on, that are considered donations. Was there anything else?
I think on the same deal, it says, there's no page number here, so. But it says that the current city policy allows for city council members to claim expenses for community meetings. I thought we changed that in the past because way in the past, we did have some council members that were turning in tickets for every single little thing, and we tried to curb some of that. So I don't know that it is policy still or not.
We can look into it and find out. I really don't know off the top of my head. Any other comments? All right, so moving on to city manager. The salary was the result, the increase was the result of my evaluation. So that's why that went up. Again, we are reflecting those changes that have occurred since the last budget process, so that's why the salary part went up. There have been reductions in other areas. I reduced our professional services a bit, but I didn't increase our training budget. So overall, between the salaries and the net out from the training, the budget went up by sixteen thousand dollars. Again, in the past, we haven't really been doing any travel. Matthew and I went to the ACMA. That happens twice a year, so we budgeted some money for and we also budgeted some money for professional development, which which also in the past, we haven't been doing. So in fact, Danielle sent me a couple of training sessions, and I've already done one with a trainer, so we continue to forward to the the training part. So at this point, the budget went up at sixteen thousand. Next one is legal services. Nothing really went up there, although we did add some money for a real estate attorney. We added twenty-five thousand. Again, there's some real estate things that I wanted to talk to council about. It probably would not be a public meeting. It would probably be an executive session because it would address specific land. So again, I put that money in there because we have some issues that I guess could best be described as intractable, right? They've been with us for a long time. And if we want to shake a loose, it may be that we need to get some advice from an attorney to figure out what our options are and what our costs might be. So again, I put an extra twenty-five thousand dollars in there as a placeholder so we could get that specialized advice from an attorney that deals specifically with real estate issues. And when we, when we come up to the point where we would expend those funds, we'll talk beforehand about what we're looking at, and then we'll decide whether or not we want to press forward with that issue. And the next one is city court. We did provide a bit of a, of an increase for that. Part of that is due to increased activity. Basically, essentially, Thatcher runs the court. We share the cost with Pima and Thatcher in terms of the overall cost of running the court, and it's based on how much we use it. It's based essentially on the workload. So part of the increase would be if Thatcher's budget goes up, that proportionate share that we shared, even if it was the same, would go up. And then if we use the court more than say Pima or Thatcher, again, your cost would go up. Right now, our Uh, right now, our our workload is not that much higher, but it is going in in the the right direction. If you consider higher, the right direction. Um, we're also, um, as we've heard from some of the police, we're doing a little bit more on the enforcement side. We will have an extra body out there as well. So it is possible that that could end up having additional costs. So I'd rather are on the side of higher as opposed to lower. Um, there is a cost in here that we want to factor out. There's an internal service fund charge, which I think was based on the fact that our court had been broken into. There were repairs that were required. They got budgeted into that budget as a one-time expense. Um, so it's a nominal amount of money, but we'll have to go in and correct that because I don't want to carry those costs forward going into the future. Because they were associated basically with renovations. So overall, the the bulk of the increase will be in the contract itself.
You're telling the prosecutor or you move to the magistrate?
Prosecutor is is actually in the legal budget and I will be bringing you that contract at the next council meeting. I did talk with Mr. Clifford. There are no changes in the cost. It's the same charge on a monthly basis and it's the same charge for victim advocacy. So uh, we actually bumped that up a little in this budget because we did it before I talked with him. But he's not increasing any of the the costs for that contract.
That's the increase we had because of him and the court dealing with him was they needed um more of a bilingual person to be able to be tapped if needed. That raised his price up in that area. I don't know that that ended up being used or not.
I don't know either. He didn't really break it down that specifically. Essentially, you have a per month fee of seven thousand dollars and then there's an extra four for victim advocacy. And again, it would depend on, you know, what the workload is. I think he provides us with a sheet that says, here's what I went through this month. It depends on how many cases go through his courtroom. It depends if he if he contracts out himself because he has the ability to hire assistants to help him out in in doing these things. So again, you you kind of take the contract at face value. Um, we would be on the hook for the seven thousand, but then he may come back at a later date in terms of maybe next year's and raise it again. But right now, that's that's the estimate that he provided.
Will you receive case load reports?
Yeah, I think we've done. Are we still getting those on a monthly basis? Yeah, he brings them over every month.
And that justifies how much, because we did increase quite a bit.
Yeah, I I think um it was this last contract cycle where we increased the budget. I don't remember exactly. I think it went from six to seven thousand a month. And I think the vic- victim advocacy doubled or went up a thousand dollars, but I can't remember off the top of my head. But we've had a three-year run at that level and he's signing up for another three years at that same level, so.
You know, the court.
Oh, the court? That goes up all the time and 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 part of that reasoning is our their amount of caseload that is ours has been on the rise. So I think we're at about sixty six or so percent of the overall caseload and it's been it's been rising.
Yeah, I just, I hope you continue to negotiate with them a little bit more. We have, we supply six phones for them too?
Uh, well, I don't know exactly. I know we do a copier. So some of the equipment, some of their computers are supplied by the state, right? So I think that our on on the equipment side, I think our exposure is minimal. I don't know if we do phones.
We do.
We do. Okay, so we do phones, we do copiers.
Yeah, I think there's still some room for negotiating over there.
But I think this latest round will be the last one before we renegotiate the contract overall, so we can have that discussion. Jeez.
Court, do you think also court?
No. And I believe for me, that's it. I think the next budget is the city clerk.
City clerk?
So I'm not sure of what that looks like, maybe just an increase due to insurance changes. I'm not aware of that, but that's what it says on there.
Yeah, that's what it says, insurance.
Yeah, but other than that, I believe overall, we changed from the we went down from the recodification being processed from last year and then also be an election year last year. So we went down. So every other year is when that election, you know, budget is put back in there.
Were your elections different? Would you, to clarify, that so the the budget was based off of the current administrative assistant in there and her elections are higher than the previous administrative assistant. And that's why the budget went up from year over year.
Yes, that's not related to you, so I'll send that to you. But overall, for the change, you know, from last year to this year would have been is down. So every other year, you'll see it go back up. So last year was a one-time recodification that we did, which is done every ten to twelve years. And then also too, the the um only thing that really changes the budget other than salary for the clerk's office would be when and when it's the election year. So you will see those elections used to be. And that's for us to cut, you know, that we contract with the county for them to actually do the ballots in the polling for us. Any questions on the clerk's budget at all?
Tammy, I just have one thing. I want to say thank you for your service to the city. Um, we're moving that asset to our organization here and I just want to say thank you for all that you've done for us. And for me, I feel like, um, you know, uh, it's great to be that we spent time with you and all that. And I just want to say thank you for all that you've done for us in the city of Stafford, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So maybe if I can make one one more clarification for for your vice mayor members of council. Uh, so this does highlight that as as personnel movements happen within the organization uh or and or there are vacancies, it can it can make it look like there's been an increase in salary. Because uh there's been a a a market adjustment when in fact, it's people moving into the position differently or their election of their of their benefits. When we do have a vacancy, we try to budget for that vacancy at where we believe that hire would happen. And we try to budget for that at the highest level of benefits package. So if this were a vacant position, uh, uh, that that the incumbent sat in, it probably would be a wash and you wouldn't be seeing anything. It's just that there was an incumbent a year ago when the budget was created at a lower benefits package that they were taking. So you'll see some other departments go down, others might go up. It's just a point in time where we where we run that number relative to the benefits package. Next, human resources.
So there's four um kind of major changes that are affecting the budget for HR. The first one is reclassifying the HR specialist to an HR analyst. So as far as that position's concerned, I've increased the job duties as well as the minimum qualifications. The next thing that you'll see is professional services going up. And the reason that that is going up is because we would like to budget for using recruitment services, like a a professional recruiter. Um, at least one time a year, uh, we'd like to budget for it just in case we do have a need that comes up for a hard-to-fill position. So like a department head type position, that kind of thing. Um, so that would be, you know, we do our internal process to see if we can fill it ourselves. And then if we're struggling to fill a position, we would engage with a professional recruiter. Uh, the next thing that you'll see is an increase to the employee appreciation budget. Uh, that is just due to inflationary increases as well as we've noticed that a lot of the employees are working pretty hard to make some of those even, especially as cooking, decorating, that kind of thing. So the thought is that we may want to cater some of those events, especially like the Christmas party. So that the employees don't have to work so hard to actually put on the event so they can enjoy the event instead. And then the uh the custodial workers being moved to building maintenance. So that kind of offsets a little bit of the cost in HR. Uh, however, I am requesting that that position go from a part-time to a full-time position. Right now that it's all it's only nineteen hours a week and there's a few departments not being covered by the custodial worker. As well as she's the current employee in that position is mentioned, it's a little hard to cover all the job duties she needs to within nineteen hours. So any questions on any of that?
You want her to go full-time and give her to another department?
Yes, so.
Yeah, that's the age, I believe.
Yeah, so it kind of offsets my budget, but it is moving being moved to building maintenance.
And your helper is taking on more duties.
Right.
So you want to change your title to reflect that?
Yes, so more duties and um it's going from requiring an associate's degree to a bachelor's degree as well as a HR certification.
And again, it's a great example of you talked about things like about salaries and we've covered that in some of the one-on-ones. But part of what we're also doing is we're looking at succession planning and we went through the process when we did the salary survey, which was to review the duties of the employees, go over their job descriptions, right? And make sure that people who are providing a certain level of service will be properly uh codified, if you will, put in the right position with the right title. So you'll see in several places where you're going to have individuals where you're saying, well, we're looking at a reclass. And it's because that in in those cases, those individuals are probably already providing a level of service that would warrant them being at a higher level.
As you said.
Yes.
Any other questions, H R? So on to finance, Rob. The uh the the main changes for finance are really dealing with filling the uh finance director position. Uh, where uh the recruitment process up to date right now, it's been a bit slow. So the budget difference in what we're looking at is twenty fours. We're actually budgeting now at the level that we're recruiting, right? So it's still within the range. It's still within the approved compensation plan, but we're targeting a different figure based on uh on on the on the marketplace right now. But additionally, there was also an addition of uh maybe a one month. Uh, if in fact, you can't fill by end of fiscal year, uh, do you need to have any additional backfill into fiscal twenty four? So there were dollars put in there as well for any backfill of professional services as necessary. Uh, and those dollars would not be spent if in fact, this position is still um prior to the prior to the fiscal year beginning. Any questions?
You still want to get a target here?
No, thank you.
Why? And you said if your wife had been here, she would be here.
We'll go on to police.
For the police department, the main increase came back in October of twenty two when we had the the mid-year increases in our salaries. Um, the others come from the debt being transferred out. That's a huge one for the ASPRS bond. We also have the eight percent increase for animal control as well as dispatch. Those are the main increases we had. Uh, is there anything specific in the line items that you want to go over?
Is is it a done deal already on what they're going to charge us for the animal control and for dispatch?
It is. And that's that's already been put into the spreadsheet.
Already been negotiated, that's what.
That was negotiated with your original contract that was approved last year.
Sound a little good.
And that was that that was done at a.
We did well. The first year, we got no increase at all.
The Western, the Western Urban City, I committed an eight percent. So that's why we had increases of eight percent there, so.
They, I think they're using us to pay for that thing.
Well, I, we're the main, we're the main users, kind of like the courts, we're the main users of all of it.
The seventeen percent professional outside services. Silbright C I Solutions ten thirty-three program, leads online. What is that?
Okay, so Silbright is, uh, while I get it real technical, it's a system that they use to download phones when we when our detectives mainly work cases. Cell phones, obviously, are plethora of information, so we have to have the service in order to download a phone. Leads online, a lot of these are investigative uh resources that our detectives use for background information, for finding people. Uh, as you know, we had significant cases throughout last year, throughout the summer especially. And these are all just avenues we go through for investigating background information, for seeking help from other, uh, whether it be like the FBI. Uh, it's called LEO. So those are those kinds of services.
It's the device armor chief wanted to be able to suck the information out of captured cell phones.
Yeah, and and that's everywhere. Every every police department in the world probably uses that at this point.
And the tasers rose from five thousand to six, more than double.
And that was.
What's that?
And so just to go, I know you like to negotiate price down, negotiate a price down on those. So those those tasers include the tasers that they actually use that deploy pros, but they tasers also include our cameras.
And yeah, everything's gone up, doubled on here, so.
And and Sam can probably even give you everything electronics has gone through the roof, especially for if it's the world has gone to, we want a video, we want it recorded. So they they own the market at this point, so they're going to set their price.
We knew that because they own the market, but um maybe in the future, we can get a report on how well them body cameras are helping you. Uh, you know, it should have reduced some of our court time. I I know the.
Well, you got to remember that uh attorneys are paid by the hour.
Yeah, exactly.
And so you could have, you could have a confession on video and I'll I'll be honest, rack of hours, they're going to, they're going to go through the process all the way to the end. And then they say, okay, we'll take a plea. So whether it reduces it, I'll be honest, I doubt it, but you have to have the camera now, that's for sure.
And those are mainly in the county court or the.
Both, it's in it's in uh city court as well as uh county guy or JP one jurisdiction.
Some some defense attorneys don't even want to keep the video in court.
Yeah, they.
Yeah, I mean, it really is, and so.
And the county attorney was glad that we all got them. He said it's helped him, said with this.
Hmm, but like I said, it's a matter of they'll take it all the way to the very end. They'll they'll offer a plea upfront, they'll take it all the way to the very end and then accept it, but they're getting paid on the backside the whole time, so.
Save them.
Well, I, we could, we would.
Now, the Edward and Mondo Legal Advisors, uh, for policy and procedures, that kind of to help us with the policy and procedures we need worked on within the department?
Not through human resources, that's through the police department. Because every year they come out with different case laws, different updates that we're required to adhere to. So like they could say, um, but I'll use a pretty simple one, which is driving on a suspended license. There's now four different types of driving on suspended licenses. They give us the case law, they tell us, okay, this is how you proceed. If a case law comes out for, say, use of force, they give us a legal opinion on what is valid on use of force and how the reporting should go.
Right there, when you're writing your report, you can like tell a doc, call them up and ask them?
No, uh, they come so, well, actually, if you need to, yes, you can actually call them. Officers, we usually require the FSRG or above make the phone call. But if an officer is working a case and he's say iffy on something, he can actually call either Edwards or a model. And they will give them their legal opinion on that, which they will come back in court.
Be handy.
They are.
Thank you.
Your cap.
Still, everything went up a lot.
Ladies and gentlemen, in terms of the council, thank you for having here tonight. As you see, our budget is um, the increase that we're proposing is uh paid for callouts for making a making a truck, riding the truck, working the fire will will rise from twenty to thirty and for signing in, responding to the call will be rising from fifteen to twenty. We have some significant uh elections in um insurance that um that I believe are going down. A lot of my firefighters work other jobs and so they have they have options when it comes to insurance. So a lot of them have elected not to not to take cities uh insurance. Uh, this budget is pretty simple. There's not many ups to it. Uh, we didn't raise a lot of it. Uh, the main increase is the salaries. I think I was supposed to say the same. Uh, this budget is also got a reminder that this budget is split in half with Stafford Fire District. They pay half of uh of our total budget.
Do you remember the last time that we increased the call out and the take to a truck?
Rachel's been here a couple of years, so I don't know how long he's been gone. I remember four years, how long he's been here, four years now?
Almost three, yeah.
Three, so um it's a couple of years prior to that, so we're probably looking at five.
Again, we we talked about increasing salary for the chief and the assistant chief. And I thought, based on some of my discussions, it might be time to bump up a little bit for the volunteers. Uh, so I requested that we put it. Glad you did.
What went, when was the chief, you increased the distance you could utilize volunteers? Did it seems that worked out, everybody, you know, that's the distance.
The distance in our uh being able to obtain membership? Yeah, we 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 changed that from three road miles to a uh three mile radius as the crow flies. So that has helped us retain members and find new ones also. So that has helped us retain members and find new ones, also. Other questions or comments? All right, thank you for your time.
What do you mean Vice Mayor Council, most of our supplemental increases for the ability to add new City of Stafford sponsor events. We may participate in the balloon event this year, working with the Chamber of Commerce, and we are looking at doing something on the city hall lawn for the Fourth of July. And that's our mostly the only changes that we had that were significant in community development. Any questions?
Most of this is, like I said earlier, Jamie, still kinda brand new. So I I don't know, maybe you do know how to how you're working it already.
Well, Vice Mayor and Councilman Lopez, my department split out in a few different budget budget presentations, you'll see. So now it's building safety, so this will be one of my bigger increases, so I cover a few categories. So if you have questions about sports, they'll come up later. And so this is for our building safety budget, the supplemental increase in this division is to include a full-time code enforcement officer, which would be salary benefits, equipment and vehicle costs. Additionally, there's a supplemental increase to operations to clean and lean properties. That is, if we find a safety hazard or an abandoned building, we may secure it and lean the property for the cost of our labor. We are out that expense on the front end, but if they sell it or anything like that, we get the money back. Anybody having any questions about that new program? And then this is the recreational program that I helped run and junior basketball and volleyball is along along with Ed's league, we're a great success this year. Lance and I just met with the school superintendent last week, and he is very happy with the younger kids' sports programs. And Mr. Casella sent you the pictures, we were able to have them have the ability for them to participate, all they ended up paying for was a T-shirt with the money that you supplied. But it was a very affordable league, and the schools are excited to get kids playing earlier so that they learn these skills at a younger age. That also includes the pool, and we have the manager, assistant manager, head guard and multiple lifeguards.
With the basketball programs, I'm hoping you keep the adults out of there.
No adults have come forward with any request for a league, so far it's all been kids, and they've been super successful, the schools are really happy with them.
Yeah, cause that some adults can run a good thing. Yeah, in the past, so hopefully, whatever it takes, keep them out of there, let's try.
Yes, and this year we have the hoops, the the pennies, a lot of the big expenses we made this year, so moving forward, we should be able to even lower the cost for the families.
Mean by the adults, it's adult teams.
Yeah, we we haven't had any requests for those at all, it's all been kids.
We want the ports for the little kids.
As far as the pool goes, is there, can anything be done about the control of the traffic? People just stop, let their kids run around, you know, run out, like maybe like in a school zone, maybe signs at the, you know.
We did put some signs out, just to be aware that there are kids crossing the street. I know Lance and I talked about that, we put a few out there already, I don't know if it becomes more of an issue for the police department to.
I I guess it would be hard because it's kind of like literally kick them out the door zone. Um, it's a temporary thing, and and we can, if we're having, yes, some issues, we can put an officer to kinda monitor and see what the.
My job, just to just to see, because it's kinda like, you know, on Main Street, when you get kids off, you know, for the dance or whatever it is. They're all over, the kids don't look, that's my that's my concern.
It hasn't helped because the school has actually extended where their bus route pickup further out, so more kids start to walk further distances to school, so parents are dropping off, picking them up instead, that's increased, I think, those. Let's do the lack of bus drivers. They found out bus drivers cut along routes.
And then the other portion of the budget that involves me is the golf course. And the increase in capital is a result of new priorities in the C I P process, the projects moving up that were in later years and the grant that we've received is reimbursable, so that shows as a capital project, but we will be reimbursed for that.
That shouted up there.
Yes.
And the rest of it seems like maintenance on our facility.
Yes, yes, Councilman Lopez, we own the facility, so there's routine maintenance, roofing, water drainage, things like that, the kitchen. Equipment that needs upgraded that we own.
Mentioned the simple sound system, hopefully that's still up track, improve the P A system.
And hopefully that is a low enough cost that we can look at that with the operation.
But yeah, that water that water grant, Dominic helped get a hold of you, say, we're getting that back.
Yes, that is reimbursed.
It here as a cost.
Yes, because we have to pay it out and then we will be reimbursed.
What I need to budget is so you can spend it.
Statutes require us, irrespective of where the money's coming from, we have to budget for the expense.
Learning that slowly.
Any other questions on that?
And you're calling that stormwater reclamation?
Yes.
Like, I got two lemons in my head still, so.
All right, so for the library, there's a few changes. The library operations supervisor, I'm requesting that to be reclassified to assistant library director. Responsibilities are definitely, there's more responsibility with that position of being grant ready. There's more supervision of staff in previous iterations of that position. So we like to see if we can request that position to reflect that. There's additional utilities expenses because of the new library annex building, we're guestimating about seventy five hundred. We're not really sure what that amount is going to be, but based on the amount of usage we're projecting, it's not gonna be used to the extent that our main building is, but it's still gonna be some usage in there, so there's a slight increase in our utilities. Our grant funding is increasing, part of it is a language instructor, but we also are going to see increases in United Way funding, we're projecting that as well as First Things First for the next contract, First Things First is projecting by nineteen percent. Starting this and this year. And we do have an overall increase in our grant funding as well. Are there any questions?
That's seventy five K, you said?
Seventy five hundred, correct.
Hundred, that's not the money.
And we are.
I can't believe I'm saying that ain't bad.
Well, we're projecting about forty percent of our funding this year will be grant funded.
Chief to give you that since he's gonna get that building in about nine years, ten years, so he won't give you that money. Okay.
We're we're projecting about forty percent will be grant funded this year.
Oh, you chasing down, thank you.
Public Works Through Streets.
Say the best for last. So I've got four divisions, we'll start with Public Works Administration. Very little change to that, I must have took a pay cut, cause that's what the salaries and benefits dropped a little bit. Just a little explanation, so last fall, we we actually changed my title and and Gage as well, so I'm I'm just the Public Works Director, not the slash city engineer, Gabe was promoter to city engineer. So Public Works Director, fifty percent of that salary comes out of admin, and the other fifty comes out of and my executive assistant, zip the salary in that as well, so very little change other than that. I'll see across the board in Public Works that I move in all my travel. Some had travel, some had training, everything's gonna be in training, and so there's some minor adjustments in each one of the divisions, just to put it all in one thing. Whether they're traveling or not, it all come out of training. Any questions on admin?
I don't know if I if it was your, were you ne- needed to get, figure out more monies to get another employee.
Yeah, I'm in, wanna get the parks, I'm looking for one in parks, yes. And I'm making some changes in Hert as well, but.
You said Hert pays part of the salary?
My salary is fifty of admin and fifty percent is.
Can some can some of our sales tax go towards the salary too?
Yes, there, members of the council, that's in in essence what's happening, so it goes part of the public work directors' cost go into the bucket in support of the streets program, which is funded kinda by that trio of the fifty, the five, the half cent sales tax increase, the V L T money that the council has said moved to that program, as well as the state's submission of Hert money to us. So generally, here within Saford, they refer to all of those three buckets as Hert, even though only really one piece of that is Hert. But so it's already paying for part of the 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 city, the the public work directors' salary.
Well, sunset to what, thirty five, you're good till then?
This go your thirty is when the half cent sales tax sunsets.
Any question, other ones on that?
A little delay here, that's okay, there it is.
This one. That the updated one? That's an increase, right? So the increase would be due to that custodial worker movement from H R into building maintenance, I needed another employee, so. The other changes are mostly just salaries and benefits, elections, looks like those have changed a little bit. My supplies budget was decreased a little bit, due to we had some budgeted money for the the repairs on my out in my operations budget this last year, and we have the C I P to continue those improvements. Pretty minimal other than that, any questions on?
I I still don't know at the end if I'm in the right place, but you said you had to redo something to be able to hire another person, and then there wasn't monies to make somebody lead person.
At the streets, it's coming out, yes, we're getting there. Next one is, we'll start talking about some added positions, so anything else on facility maintenance that jumps out at you? Now, like once again, that's minor changes, just moving everything into training instead of travel and training. Most of my departments, well, all of them, you'll see minor increases in fuel, due to the cost of fuel. We're over on every department, that's just because of the cost of it, so. So park. Pretty substantial increase, and this is due to the fact that I am asking for a new body, supplemental addition, which would be that new body. I don't think this takes into account another vehicle, which would probably have to go on top of that, we'll need another vehicle for that body. The other increases in this position would be, and I think I need to clarify this with Rob, this shows an additional ten percent or ten thousand for the I G A with the school, which we had in last year's budget. Shows it as an increase, I don't think it's increased, we're just continuing that on to this next year. The other major increases would be in when operations under fuel or chemicals, costs have gone up on both those substantially. And G I S internal services, I'm not saying on that, but I'm assuming that's due to the parks. Building of the parks, I went up five thousand five hundred percent in G I S services, so. I think that's all based on what projects come up that year, how much involvement they have in shooting in stuff, and so that gave this. So that one went up from basically nothing to eight thousand dollars, so. Any questions on parks, that's that's the one that I am at requesting that position, due to the fact that over the years, we've added, you know, upgraded Plamenas Park. There's more maintenance involved there, we've upgraded La Tierra Park, more maintenance there, and then with the with the construction of El Paso coming on, and added maintenance area along with our Eighth Avenue and Montgomery, which when that's done, more than likely, I'm gonna be looking for another body as well, so that one. We're just spread so thin in the parks, as you may or may not know, parks not only just covers the grounds and buildings, all go with parks, they handle any of our retention basins that have grass growing in them. Montana Vista's one, there's one over Crimson Canyon by the high school. They cover Dry Lake Park, Archery Range, Rifle Range, they cover airport as well, so. Five guys covering all that stuff is, they do a great job, and the cemetery. So they do a great job, but we are, we are short on bodies, and so I'm asking for one this year to kinda get us.
And the washes?
The washes, washes, like regular wash?
And like Stockton wash?
No, I I have the streets guys take care of this, they don't do Stockton.
Or on, the one right there by the cemetery.
Yeah, regular wash, by the the streets.
Are you responsible for any of the irrigation ditches?
So any irrigation ditches that we that we use as slash storm drain? Yes, we we take care of all of them. We we also take care of a few minor, if if there's something in our hideaway. Councilman R B Z will hit me up about some broken boards on the top of a, right along the back of the curb, it wasn't sidewalk, it's broken boards on it, on an opening somebody can fall in, obviously, it wasn't a storm drain, it was an irrigation, cause we don't put anything in it, but it's in our rideaway, so we spent thirty bucks and put new boards on it, I mean, we're we're here to maintain stuff in our rideaway.
And you're still not very high on inmates?
No, inmates. First of all, I don't think there's any available yet, still, they don't, they're having trouble getting any that are even available, I haven't heard anything from them for a good six months. But when we had them, we actually probably less production than we have right now, just to the fact that we have so much time bringing them in for inspection, taking them in for lunch, bringing them in for the third inspection and pickup, it's just it was basically one guy was just babysitting all you all day long, so that guy wasn't getting anything done but watching it.
We pet down on the quality of the inmate coming out too.
We used to have some pretty good.
Yeah, they let, they'll only let the drug users out, they won't let the drug sellers out, there's a big difference.
They used to have a really good one there, the facility cleaning and this building and and. You go through so many, you get one good one and then they end up going away. I'm I'm not high on it, I have, I don't have one single employee that wants them back. So I think we get more done without them, but they are cheap, you get what you pay for, so. Do you have any other questions on parks? Um, last one is Hert. So in the street, budget showing an increase of thirty four thousand. Originally, I was asking for a couple of things, I was asking for additional lead position. One of my bodies in streets is fifty fifty between sanitation and and streets, he spends half his day running garbage, or half his week running garbage trucks, another half helping streets, and I was gonna add another another body as well, this this budget just shows adding that additional lead position, so taking one of my current bodies and turning into another lead position, and then making that fifty fifty position a full-time position, so. We're gonna make this, the idea is we can make it work out where if we lose that fifty, that half position in sanitation, we can still get by unless somebody goes out. Then we need help, what we're doing in that sanitation division is cross-training these streets guys so they can run the front load and do the commercial route, if if need be, if somebody was missing, we can just grab a streets guy, throw him in in the truck and he can cover. That way, we can lose the fifty percent position from sanitation, make him full-time in streets. On paper, it sounded really good, I thought it was a good idea, and it was working out in my mind really well, but it doesn't doesn't have that coerciveness of camaraderie, and you got one guy that's left out of the group for half the time on both groups, and he's really not a part of either team, it's been pretty hard on him. So whether it's this one. Been pretty hard on him, so whether it's this one person or somebody else, I, I, once you started seeing that, it. It dawned on me that it just doesn't work, because they're just not, they're not included. By the time Wednesday rolls around, streets has got lined out what they're working on, you know, this guy ends up getting stuck in sweeper. Doing something else, so. That was what I'm asking for in this, in this department, would be the increase of creating that second lead, so I can have two teams, which I've got guys, guys for sure on the. Much acting like a lead because we separated into groups, we got one crack ceiling group, we got somebody working on storm drain. I want to have those availability, have those two team leads, and then that additional fifty percent position being turned into a full-time. That's the minor increase in the wages that you see there. The other increase in my budget would be capital purchases, which, uh, would be on the capital side of things, where I'm asking for a couple of vehicles, one would be a new. Street sweeper, priority one was a street sweeper, we got two that are really, really old, and one's almost unusable because the, the hopper's just completely wore out. Um, so priority one is that street sweeper, and then priority two would we, we were looking to upgrade and get a new. Striping machine, striping truck, the one we've got is. It's, it's really old and it's really big, it's meant to probably strike freeways and. I don't know where it came from, but it, it's. We've used it, yeah, we've used it a lot, and every court go test, we put a lot of money into that every year to try and keep it working, we're having a hard time finding parts for it. Every year, we don't need anything that gigantic, so we're, we're looking for something. Quite a fight down a little bit from that, still a truck mounted unit, and I've got a, you know, we've got a couple estimates, you're still looking over three hundred thousand for a, for a striking truck, and, and same with the. Sweeper, they're, they're pretty good purchases, and we do have some, some funds available in our, in our fleet. Herf vehicle fund, that's where we're gonna buy those out of that fund and then charge back or, or replace it.
You can outright buy.
That's what we have, well, we have about a million dollars in that, right, that we could outright buy them, and then, and then start our replacement costs, so when we need another one, we can, we can do the same thing.
And that's how we can afford those, because when we depreciated those in the past, now that money's sitting there, so you buy the new one and, and it repeats. But first, we are concerned until we found and via rotation that the monies were available. They're covered.
Just one other thing in her, if I just, you know, I just want to mention, and we talked about it a little bit on that. Uh, sunset, but our, our streets, we've hit the, hit the end of some of these streets's life, and you can see it around town, some of them are getting really bad. Hollywood is one we got in the budget to, to do right, you know. I, I didn't even put it in the C I P, but we've got Fourteenth Avenue on both sides of what we just did on the high school, that's gonna be needing some. A, a milling overlay, not in there, for one, uh, we don't have the funds to do it, but we're gonna have to come up with some. Additional resources somehow, we're looking at some, you know, other, other grants and stuff to get some of this stuff done, but. When we first had that sales tax, it was to rejuvenate pretty much every road in town, that's what it did, and that was. Probably twenty, close to twenty years ago, and now we're getting to the end of that. Roads don't last much more than twenty years. Hey, my press program does a good job replacing that, but I did forget to mention one thing, we did add in my operations, we're gonna, we want to put in, uh. An asset management software, where. It's some, Vice Hall is the name of the company that we want to go with, Seago's used them this year, they go around, they have some software and some camera systems that. Basically, you can drive all your streets, they, they, uh, analyze the streets pavement. Condition, give you an assessment based on. You know, green, red, yellow, whether it's in good condition, poor condition, uh, that kind of stuff, and then we can dig that asset management. List and prioritize which roads need to be, you know, right now, we just have it on a three-year rejuvenation, we have a fog show every three years. If it needs it, which they usually do, if not earlier, and then we just kind of take our best estimate by evaluating the roads, which ones need to be chip sealed. Soon as we can, and then we just, there's really no rhyme or reason to it, other than that three-year cycle on the hitting it with a little oil.
It's a cost.
Because that Vice Hall, uh, program is ten thousand dollars for the first year.
That, that'll be good, because we've talked about that in Seago.
Yeah, they've done, well, the whole Seago region, they've done a lot of roads, in fact, through town, I think they've done the highways. We've got, Gabe and I both have access to that software or that website of for Seago. We want to take that company and, and just do all our roads, and I believe it was six hundred hours, wasn't it, Gabe, like, six hundred hours of drive time, so we could, we could drive all our roads. Four times in one year, if we thought it was gonna do us any good for that same price.
Again, this kind of epitomizes some of what we've been talking about, right, whether it's buildings or streets or anything else, right? The idea is that you're kind of assessing your universe that you're dealing, wh-what is it, the overall cost of maintaining streets, do we really know? And how do we rotate through that, so you don't want to piecemeal it, you want to figure out, so when we say, well, we've got another half percent, we put it in there for a reason, it's gonna sunset. What you want to do is you want to figure out what the need is, whether it's your water department or your streets or your building maintenance. You want to define, okay, what is the universe that we're dealing with, so think back to, um. Jenny's presentation at the last council meeting, right, she was talking about it on the state level. Well, everybody sees the states out there building all these roads, well, what they're not doing is maintaining the old ones, and she saw over time how the quality of those roads was in decline. And so that's something that we need to kind of look at across the board, and Lance and I have been talking about this in terms of. Whether it's your buildings or your roads, right, or your water system or anything else, there's that maintenance component, so define the universe you're dealing with, and then plan a cycle. By which you would replace that material, so that you're not just saying, okay, in five years, I fully funded that C I P, but. As I see, uh, as I fund that C I P back to back to back to back, am I rotating through that cycle to maintain those, whatever it is, road, buildings, whatever, at the appropriate level?
And to maintain, then to.
And so this, this survey provides us with a systematic way of assessing our streets, and then we can determine what will our cost be, because it's that. Cost that you're going to have to maintain the streets that would drive whatever revenues you determine are necessary to make it happen.
It's just gonna get worse the more, more traffic we have in town, and Discovery Park Boulevard is a good example, I don't. Think that was a chip seal over the top of some millions, and. That, that traffic on this road has gone up probably three times as much since I've been here, it's, it's showing its wear and tear, and. For a lot of that length, it's all gonna be on us to do something with that road, a lot of it's gonna be based on development, explore to it, but. Most of it on this road's gonna be us, so. Hopefully, we can find a good, a good funding source to do some of that stuff. Any other questions on herf?
I ordered more ketsin.
Yeah, that's gonna, dude, that's.
Done that the whole lot.
All of our costs, I don't know if you, if you noticed last year, our cost of our oil and, oiling and chip sealing. Pretty much doubled, we couldn't do half as much as we wanted to. It's gone down a little bit since last year, but it's not.
So what did you do, Lance?
What's that?
You had a budget, right? You didn't exceed it.
No.
So what did you do?
Back and did half of it.
Right, so he tried to maintain the budget, instead of meeting the need, cut back on what he took care of, so he maintained that budget level, but he didn't finish what he needed to do. And, and that's a problem, right, you don't want to do it that way, if you've got a cycle, and again, I understand why he did it, because the monies, he stayed within his budget. But you can't just cut back on what you're taking care of, because you still got to take care of it, right, so.
Now we're behind.
Right, so now you're behind, and that accumulates, and of course, we've seen that in other areas of the budget as well, and of course, inflation is exacerbating that right now, too.
And so there you go, Vice Mayor. And members of the council, good news, bad news, uh, here for streets is that debt service, uh, that you see up here, about six hundred and sixteen thousand. Small piece of that goes away in a couple of years, where it was acquisitions right away, the rest of it, over five hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, will sunset, uh, last payment is in fiscal twenty-eight, that gives you one year, uh, through fiscal thirty of your half-cent sales tax to be, have it go towards all net new projects. So you're still using your half-cent sales tax to pay debt for the projects that were complete, you know, fifteen plus years ago or whenever that timeframe. So the money will be coming back, uh, but then it's, you're running into that sunset time. So that's all we have for tonight on general government, uh, again, uh, we're, we're planning on, as far as next steps, is to be back. Here on the twentieth of March to do, uh, the other half of the department reviews for enterprise and internal services and any of the other miscellaneous that might exist. Uh, the calendar moving forward, uh, as I indicated in my discussion upfront, March twenty-seventh is kind of a big date. Uh, we did talk about maybe doing the C I P on that day, that might get moved out, uh, if it makes more sense to do it, right around the time we're looking at. Uh, having the final conversation on the, the, uh, budget in, uh, in April of twenty, uh, April twenty-fourth. But, yeah, you will see on the twenty-seventh of March, we'll be back to go over all of our revenue projections, uh, what we've modeled, uh, going into fiscal twenty-four. Everything we know about that might have been passed by the legislature at that point, uh, if, if in fact any, that would affect us from a, from a, a revenue perspective. As well as have conversation on fund balance availability. So if you recall, we said that fifty percent plus debt service as that balance you want to keep aside. And then what does that look like then, is available for other things, whether it be for compensation, whether it be for capital, uh, whether you want to pay down debt more. Uh, so that's where we can talk about that fund balance availability, and that will be for all funds, not just the general fund. Again, it, it'll be H R there talking about all things compensation, healthcare costs, splitting how we want to then, uh, package together, if anything. Uh, in, in order to deal with, uh, co- total compensation, uh, not only salary, but looking at the benefits package for employees, that also would be on the twenty-seventh. Then into April, after we get your direction on that date, uh, that sets forth an action, a, a couple of really, uh. Heavy and hard weeks that will then pull all that together, so we can then post, uh, a public conversation, uh, to come back to the full body. Where it would be the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal twenty-four, that would then be on the twenty-fourth, again, still in a work session, uh, fashion. Uh, still, uh, seeking direction or any of the comments and fine tweaking, uh, that then gives us a two-week basically turnaround time, uh, to bring the tentative budget to you. Uh, most of you may recall what is a tentative budget means, uh, in the, the, uh, state statutes vernacular, that means once you set that number, that is the maximum, you can't go above that. It doesn't mean you can't move it around, put it in a different bucket, but if you say it's seventy-three million, you can't go seventy-three million and one dollar, it's seventy-three million, that's it. So that, that is a legal, uh, note, and that's why, uh, folks like me, we, we sweat on that day and say, I hope it's the right number, and it will be the right number. Uh, the twenty-second of May then is when we would come and finally adopt the budget, that is really the pomp and circumstance. You do the budget hearing, you do the levy, uh, property tax levy, and you finally adopt the budget. Uh, and then ultimately, the tax levy then would be adopted then into the June timeframe. So there's still a lot of work to be done, uh, still direction we're looking at from, uh, from the council, and in order to make sure that this is. Obviously Safford's budget, uh, the teamwork, uh, between staff, uh, and the elected body, as well as the citizens, uh, making sure that we're meeting their needs. And we're delivering the services that they require. So with that, Vice Mayor, are there any other questions, uh, that, that you or the council might have?
I'd just like staff to know, I don't always choose my words real good, but I, uh, appreciate all of you, so. If you think I'm arguing with you, I'm not, I'm trying to get you to help me understand, so that I can make the right decision, and I'm very comfortable with all of you. And I just would like you to know that.
Move on, uh, any announcements or, of, uh, current events? If not, uh, requests for future agenda items? Nope, then we'll need somebody to.